I call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Legions. The clerk may call the roll.
Councilmember Porter, councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent, councilmember Dundon.
Present.
Councilmember Coste.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Councilmember President Medavetzky.
Right, welcome down Deputy Mayor Hyman and the LTC Cornell Morris, Director of the Binghamton Veterans Center. For RL 24-235, and I hand things over to Councilwoman Middleton, Chair of MPA.
Hello, guys. Hi, welcome. This is RL 24-235, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of banners from Binghamton Hometown Heroes Banner Program. So I just wanted to start by thanking you so much for your service. You're welcome. So can you explain what this is about?
Sure, thank you. As the council president said, I'm joined tonight by Lieutenant Colonel Cornell Morris. He's the Director of the Binghamton Vet Center. Director Morris has been a key piece of this initiative from its inception, so I'm grateful he was able to join us tonight. This RL is to authorize the city to accept a donation of up to 50 light pole banners from the Binghamton Hometown Heroes Banner Program Committee. The banners each honor a local veteran with their name, photo, branch, and years of service. The first round of banners went up last year. You've likely seen them. They're on the Bevier Street Bridge right near Ottenango Park. The next round is planned for Front Street between the Bevier Street Bridge and Prospects Street. We are asking for this to be expedited, so the new banners can hopefully be installed as soon as possible, hopefully before the holiday season.
Sure. Does anybody have any questions before I ask for an expedition?
No, I just was gonna say thank you for your service, and I make the motion to expedite.
Oh, well, second. I was gonna make that one.
Okay. Motion to expedite by Councilman Dundon, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. Any discussion? Okay, clerk can call the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton, councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Coste.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember President Medavetzky.
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
Thank you, Megan.
I have questions.
I've got a question. Is there a... Was this like indefinitely, or is there like a number of years that you have planned for these banners to be up?
So I think that you guys are still accepting applications on a rolling basis. There's 24 approved to go up right now, but I think there are almost double that on Front Street, so probably keep it going. That's why we were asking for the council to authorize the acceptance of up to 50 banners, so they won't have to come back the next time there's a new round of applicants.
Awesome.
Is that right?
Thank you. And you just had something at the form, correct? Well, arena, whatever. I'm saying form, it's arena. You just had something last week, correct? Like a ceremony?
Sure.
Okay, awesome. Make sure you invite us to the next one. We'd love to come and support you. Thank you.
I guess one of those topics we often ask about is how do people know to apply, to get a family member on the banner, or to get themselves on the banner? What's that process?
Okay.
Get real close.
Okay, so we have the Facebook post there. We have applications at the Binghamton Vet Center. We also have a number of veteran-centric locations, like Brian Vodisak's office at Broom County Veteran Services, American Legions. So all the major veteran service organizations have applications, but they can also go to the Facebook site also, and everything's there with photos, etc.
Is there a range of years that you're looking for, living in memory? Is there...
They honor both living and deceased veterans. I think the only, I should say, the main requirement is that they were resident of the city of Binghamton at some point.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you so much. Well, welcome down Business Manager Billy Goodson for RL 24-225, and I hand things over to Councilman Kavanaugh, Chair of Finance.
Good evening.
Good evening. So this is RL 24-225, amending the joint sewage treatment budget to provide refunds back to municipal users. This is adjusting, basically cutting down your reserve funds, right, that have built up.
Fund balance, yeah.
And then it's the, I think it comes from a request of the two mayors from Johnson City.
Correct, yes.
Do you want to, Chuck, or you want to explain that?
Yeah, I went to the board already and explained it to the board. And then this is, they sent a legislation over to the Johnson City as well. But what this is, is this is accumulation of fund balance over the years that they have not sent back to the municipalities. I'm just taking about half of what they have and sending it back. It's, the municipalities usually do need the money back for their sewer funds with the crease expenses over the years. It's a good thing to do, and we may have to do that once every four or five years. Because the joint sewer plant should just be a, like, evenly funded entity.
So, these are... We're getting back essentially what is part of what people paid as their sewer rates, coming back. But it has to stay in the sewer fund, I understand?
Yes, we have to keep that in our sewer fund when we get whatever our portion back is.
But that allows us, that can be expended on sewer infrastructure, correct? I mean, that's... Or have you already, has this already been accounted for?
Well, basically, not to get into too many details, but we do have a due-to, due-from from the general fund that we haven't been able to pay back yet. This is gonna significantly help, because the general fund has, over the years, subsidized the sewer fund. Because it could not increase revenues over expenses. We're trying to do that with this budget.
Okay.
A large portion of this was from FEMA reimbursements, and we had a settlement for the wall collapse. So these funds were allocated to fund balance. And the board agreed last year, I believe, to give $4 million of it back because of the... They wanted to pay back the users that had to pay into the reconstruction of the plant. So that's why we...
Right. I have an RO coming later that explains the other half of this tonight.
Okay. Any other questions?
I've got a point of clarity. So my understanding was that this is a routine transfer, but it's not annual?
We have done this in the past. We've done this twice between 2014 and 2019. Mainly since we switched to an ES fund before they had a capital fund. And they had a lot of capital transfers that they never utilized on their capital projects in the plant. And the reason being is they transferred all this money over, but then the flood wall collapsed, and then the city and Johnson City was paying for everything, a complete rehaul of the plant. So they had all this extra money, and we took, we took basically about $14 million back. No, about $10 million. And then this is just the accumulation of the process between the budgeting and the actuals. And the actuals of how always come in, higher revenues, lower expenses, and that accumulates over time. So when it gets up to a certain amount of money, I don't know if whoever wants to decide what that number is, we can take that back and send it back to the users, because the users are paying that on an estimated bill every quarter. And those users are the 10 municipalities that send water, at least, to the plant.
Okay, so it seems like it's happening every five years, but it's not planned to be?
It's not planned.
It's just when there's an accumulation of funds, then it...
Yep. If we can keep their budget tight, and if they can reach their expenses, and they're pretty even, they could, they could just run a normal fund balance forever and never have it increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have RL 24-237. We welcome down our Water Superintendent, and I hand things over to Councilman Kavanaugh, Chair of Finance.
All right, so, oh, you're gonna have Jeff, all right.
No Jeff.
You're gonna have Jeff. Okay, so Chuck is going to explain RL 24-237, amending the water fund budget for some over-budget items, and I think this is pretty straightforward. We know that chemicals and electricity have gotten more expensive.
Absolutely. The only thing that he called me to, so... Okay. So basically, yes, he has some overruns in chemicals, and I believe there was another one. Chemicals was on the second page. That was the...
Electricity is the other.
And the electricity. Electricity is going up in every department. And he calculated out his chemicals for the end of the year. And there's four different categories that he needs chemicals in. He called his suppliers, and that's pretty much what he's gonna need till the end of the year for chemicals. And electricity is gonna be, is pretty much a good estimate for the end of the year, too, from what we've been paying.
So the line show, this is getting drawn from water fund fund balance, is it, does that remain healthy enough?
Yeah, the sewer fund does have, excuse me, water fund does have fund balance. And with their tightening of their budget from last year to this year, they don't have a lot of other expense lines that I can take it from. And all the revenues haven't come in yet, so I don't know if I could have taken it from a revenue line.
Is there another, there's another, another set of water bills coming in before the end of the year, right?
We bill out the first of every month, so we'll bill out the first of December.
Pretty basic, gotta pay the bills. Any other questions?
Right. Thank you. Next, we have RL 24-231, considered in public works and parks. Handing things over to Councilman Dundon and welcoming down Chief Engineer Ron Lake.
Yeah, this is RL 24-231, a resolution authorizing a supplemental agreement number five, Deco District Street Scape Improvements. How you doing today, Ron? You wanna give us a little background on this, please?
Yeah, this is for the Phase Two of the Art Deco. You remember last year we did State Street. This next year we'll be doing Washington Street and connecting Henry and Anup to Lewis. This is for some additional stuff that came to light after they had done about 90% of their original work. We added a water line because we found out that most of those parts in there, and the hydrants, and some of the valves were very, very old and probably didn't work. So while we're having a street tore up, we figured we'd better replace all of that utility. And another part of it is there's an alleyway between what was the old City Cafe and the forum in that area. Crow, I guess Crow Bar. So there's an alleyway in there that we're connecting, so that we have pedestrian traffic that can go from State Street to Washington Street and take advantage by foot traffic. And that was some lights and sidewalks and things that had to be designed in there. So that's, that's most of the crux of what this is for.
And from the looks of this, it's for $50,000, correct?
Yes.
And you need this to be expedited?
Yes, please. And it does include some additional construction administration on your part.
I don't have any other questions, but I'll let other council members take the floor before I make the motion to expedite.
So the, the actual water main replacement and associated pipes and valves and such, is that going to increase the Deco District project cost? Or is that coming from regular water sewer replacement funding, or we don't know yet?
We don't know, but most likely it'll come out of our water sewer budget. I'm not really sure there's much of any Deco money left.
That's what I thought.
Ron, is that, you said that alley, is that a public right-of-way through there, or is...
It will be.
It will be? Okay. Are we buying it, or...
We may have already bought it.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a fence throughout the city of other areas that need things like hydrants and such replaced? Like, is there a schedule of that? Is there, I mean...
We do that. Every street that we work on during the summer, we evaluate it whether it needs to just have a mill and pave. And when it has, even if it has mill and pave, we check the year on the service lines and whatnot, and we will replace them and go through ahead, so we don't have to come back. And it's cheaper to do that and to dig it up and then pave it some other time.
Yeah, just to clarify for the people watching in council, that's why sometimes like the Glenwood, Glenwood Ave reconstruction, that means they're doing a full reconstruction of the street, any water, sewer lines, hydrants, and so on. Milling and paving means they're just re-blacktopping the street. So if anything on the hydrant and the service lines seem like they're within 20 or 30 years, I'm guessing, the city will test the hydrants like they do every spring, and if they deem good, they'll just mill and pave and then move on.
Or we may replace a few valves if they don't, if they don't work.
Was, this assessment was done in your normal sequence of events?
Yeah, because this is the greatest being repaired.
If nobody else has any questions, I'd like to make the motion to expedite this.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dundon, was that a second by Councilman Coste? Great. Discussion on the expedition. I don't believe I saw a justification on the request. Would you like to explain the need for the expedition?
The reason for the expedition? We're, they're gonna wanna do an invoice for it probably real soon, because they've been working on it, and I'd like to stay up to date with our invoices.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Clerk can call the roll.
Councilmember Porter. Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh. Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Coste.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Nay.
Council President Medavetzky.
Aye.
Thank you, that's five two.
All right. Thank you so much. Anyone else have any questions? Oh, you're the next one, too. Okay. There we go. Next, we have RL 24-232, again, considered in public works and parks. Same presenter, same councilman.
This is RL 24-232. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Barton and Legaitis for Ball Avenue Outfall. Ron, you wanna give us a little background on this?
Yes, this is our Ball Avenue project that we're looking into, and that we just had cleaned so stormwater could get through there. But over the years, it's become deteriorated, and it's one of the ones that we have engineering study on right now to determine whether we need to replace it, whether we can slip line it, or what we can do with it to get it in better condition than it is. And this is for $16,700, but it goes to their subcontractor, which is Red Zone Robotics. And what Red Zone Robotics does is they go, they can fly through the pipe and actually determine its roundness and where it has bends and angles, so we can determine the exact size of that pipe and its present condition. And we need that in order to determine what we can do to fix the pipe.
Yeah, just from my experience in construction, a lot of these companies use different kinds of drones to go down and study the hole, like Ron said. It gives a full laser schematic layout of the diameter of the pipe, any deterioration of the pipe, if the pipe's collapsed at any spot. So that way, like he said, they can either determine if it has to be dug up and the whole pipe has to be replaced, or if when they, I can't think of the word now, when they slide the slip into it, it's almost like putting like a stent in an artery to that way hold the integrity of a pipe.
Right, and it has to have a round enough shape to take a slip line.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Kavanaugh?
I mean, this is not, I don't know if this is a question for you, but for maybe for BNL. I mean, their subcontractor came in a third more, basically, than they originally thought. I mean...
That original price was only an estimate. It wasn't a lump sum. Because they couldn't get Red Zone up here, and Red Zone gave them an estimate only.
Okay.
And then after they saw it, it increased, yes. But it was an estimate. It wasn't a fixed price.
It wasn't a, okay.
Ron, is it work that we do fairly regularly to do inspection on all of our, just like water lines and infrastructure?
We do look at our large diameters, storm pipes. And most of the time, we can, we can walk through them, but this one is so long that we really need to have the robotics in order to figure out if every place in it will take a slip line, or we have to excavate it, or whatever. It's just gonna give us a whole lot more information and save us time.
Yeah, because legally you can't just stick somebody in a confined space with a flashlight and have them walk a mile and take notes. This isn't the 1800s.
Right. Well, where I was trying to go is if we do this fairly often, is there, has there been any thought about trading somebody and getting the equipment to be able to do this in-house, so that we're...
Or as much as we would use it, we wouldn't get our money out of it.
Okay, thank you. If nobody else has any questions, I see on this that it needs to be expedited. I'd like to make the motion for, to expedite this.
I just had a question. Why did it...
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Dundon, seconded by Councilman Coste. Discussion on the expedition. Councilman Middleton.
Oh, why? I'm still kind of confused still, why?
I didn't hear.
Why? Does it need to be expedited?
So this is something that they've been working on, and I've been in on the meetings all the way through choosing who's gonna be the engineer. And it's really been a few-month-long process. And obviously, to get the robotics in there would give us the best results we could as we get through winter, moving into spring, and when the new construction would start.
Yeah, because we can't, until this is done, we can't call the robotics company to come in.
Had a lot of issues with Ball Avenue.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, the clerk can call the roll on the expedition.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilwoman Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Coste.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky.
Aye.
Thank you, that is six one.
This will be expedited
Thank you.
to Wednesday's meeting. Thank you. Next, we have RL 24-233, considered in public works and parks. And we'll welcome down Acting Commissioner Parks Ballard and hand things over to Councilman Dundon.
This is RL 24-233. It's a resolution to accept a $12,000 grant from Broom County for the 2024-2025 youth sports programming. How you doing today, Nick?
Good. How are you guys?
Good. You wanna give us a little background on this, even though this seems to be pretty cut and dry to me?
Yeah, so we plan on using this $12,000 for mostly sports uniforms for all of our programming. We have to recondition our football helmets every year, so send them away. I know we need new shoulder pads. So we'll use, use it for basically, and we can also use it for salaries, so.
Any questions?
I've got a question. Is, are we, is the Parks Department looking into any other youth, youth programming funding opportunities? Are you chasing any other grants right now, or is...
Not right at this time, no.
Not right. The reason I bring it up is, I, I don't have the exact details, but I know that the Community Center, Community Center in Endicott just got some funding. And again, I don't know the details, but it seemed like it was a sustained grant over like three to five years. And I hope that we can start like pursuing that type of opportunity for the new youth center.
Oh, absolutely.
So, just putting that out there.
Just a quick question. When is everything gonna be up and running?
For programming?
Yes, programming.
We'll start, we're gonna start some stuff at the rec center hopefully pretty soon. We're undergoing some housekeeping and some other stuff going on there. We're gonna do some renovations. So we hope to get some stuff in there for the kids throughout the winter months, and then we'll get all our regular sports going as well.
Keep us updated, too, if you can. I'd love, I'd love to come over.
Shoot some hoops?
Yeah, well, I don't know about that, but... But yes, please, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, Nick, I coached Pee-wee football and girls softball in the city between the two of them for 20-plus years. So anytime I see anything like this, I'm all aboard all the time.
Every bit helps. Everything's expensive, so.
Oh, yeah. I used to recondition. I'd be up there at Rec Park doing the helmets and the pads and making a check of what was new and what I could fix and replace, so.
You gotta keep them safe.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
Next, we welcome down Sarah Klose, Director of Economic Development. Hand things over to Councilwoman Middleton, Chair of MPA. We have RL 24-228.
Hi, Sarah. This is RL 24-228, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a parking agreement with Boskov?
That is correct. So we are nearing the very, very end of our lease negotiations with Boskov. It started a little over a year ago with the announcement of a $5 million grant from the state of New York through Assemblywoman Lepardo's office, as well as a $3.5 million allocation split between the city of Binghamton and Broom County for ARPA dollars with a $1.5 million match by Boskov's. This is kind of the last piece. We passed the lease agreement at the BLDC meeting last Thursday. This parking agreement runs co-terminus with the lease agreement. So now that we have authorization for that signature, we're looking for authorization to enter into this parking agreement. As the garage is nearing completion and we've installed the validation equipment, Boskov's is very interested in being able to access the parking that they have had since 2013 with us. So that is what this parking agreement is designed to do. It also has an addendum from Laz about the validation equipment that Boskov's will be using that we added to this parking agreement for this round. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Kavanaugh?
Based on historical use of the validation program, what actually is the value of, of what? what, what actually is the value of, of what the city is, is offering to Boskovs for, is it twenty-five thousand a year?
Um, it's likely more than twenty-five thousand. Um, we don't have an exact number because it just depends on the number of customers that they have. They pay for their employees' parking passes, but then the validation is valued at twenty-five thousand dollars. But we don't cap how much, how many validations they can get with that twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do we keep a record of it?
I'm sure.
I'm sure we could with the new system. I don't have any historic data, no.
They do with all those stamped things, right? I don't know, like.
I was not working at the city of Binghamton when the Water Street Garage was previously operational, but we have an entirely new validation system with flash, which will all be through the internet. So I believe we'll be able to access it information moving forward.
Anyone else? Councilman Hotchkiss?
Does the validation system, I know that we're, we're only talking about Boskovs here, but is that available for other local businesses to have the same sort of parking incentive?
Um, I'll take your questions in two parts. One, yes, validation is available for other businesses. Laz has already been doing proactive outreach with the businesses in the area. And as they plan their marketing for when the garage opens, they are actively making a push to allow validation from area businesses. But no, no one else will have an agreement quite like Boskovs. They have specific tablets that they use because it's a condition of their lease versus the other companies that will have a different system for validation. But it will still allow them to validate that parking at a reduced rate in coordination with Laz. They just won't have the tablets that Boskovs has.
Thanks.
So to follow up on your question, Sarah, according to this lease agreement, Boskovs, any customer of Boskovs would get three hours free parking. How would you determine what each other vendor that's along Water Street would have that you would be entitled to?
Those would be negotiations between Laz and the business based on how much they want to pay, what they want to offer their customers. Boskovs has historically had a three-hour validation period and it was important for them to maintain it. I would imagine that most of the other businesses would want two or three hours of validation, just depending on what exactly your service is, you know, dinner versus a show, things like that. But those are all negotiations between Laz and the businesses. And I don't have a, I'm sure I could connect you with my contact at Laz, but I haven't gotten kind of the formal paperwork on validation yet. We will be pushing that out to all of the businesses once we have it.
Can you make sure we get a copy of that too, please? Thank you.
And we are requesting expedition because the lease passed last Thursday and the garage is expected to open within the next two weeks. This would allow us to enter into this agreement before the parking garage opens and get everything set up.
I'll make the motion to expedite.
Motion by Councilman Coste.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Dundon. Discussion on motion to expedite. Sound pretty clear? Okay, anyone else? Clerk can call the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
If you want to, if you, do you have something you want to share?
My personal thoughts.
Councilmember Porter. Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Coste.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Madavetsky.
Aye.
Thank you, that is six one.
So this will be on Wednesday's agenda. Next, we have RL twenty-four dash two two nine, also considered an MPA, same presenter.
Um, this is RL twenty-four dash two two nine, a resolution authorizing free parking at the Water Street ramp from eleven thirty till twelve seven.
Yes, so this is an optional free parking option that we wanted to introduce as the garage was opening. This is the kickoff to the holiday shopping season. Small Business Saturday is November thirtieth. And this is just a week from Saturday to Saturday, eleven thirty to twelve seven. We talked with Laz about whether this would make sense, but this is something that they can easily offer using their system. They assured us that it is. This is really just trying to incentivize people to use the garage. As many of you likely know, people don't have the greatest relationship with our garages in downtown based on their historic. Yes, condition, thank you very much. And so we want to really invite people to use the garages. We think that's important, especially when people are parking long-term, that they're using those garages and keeping street parking open for those higher turnover spots. So it's just a way for us to highlight that parking garage is open, that it's available, that we want people to be using it. It is only two hours of free parking, really still trying to turn people over in that garage. We don't want people, you know, staying there all day necessarily and, and using those spots that are supposed to be driving downtown business. But it's just a way to really invite people back into downtown. Obviously, businesses, customers, citizens alike have all, you know, suffered through the last couple of years with us and we're super grateful to all the businesses who have really been with us through this process. This is really just an incentive we would like to offer them. Laz has assured me it's, it's a fairly easy thing. We would do some promotion of it pending council approval, just to try to get some people downtown specifically for Small Business Saturday, but then throughout that whole first week of the holiday shopping season, the formal beginning, I should say.
Um, are we paying Laz anything for this, or?
No, my understanding is that they just waive the parking. So we don't pay for that parking. Laz just simply doesn't charge for it for those first two hours if we were to approve this.
Okay.
Councilman Hotchkiss?
I think this is positive because it's, people aren't used to parking there anymore because it hasn't been available. So it's to try to incentivize free parking. I think it makes sense and it'll help people form the habit again.
And we also talked about when we got our second meter checking person that they will be working on, I think we talked about them working on Black Friday and Small Business Saturday, which have been complaints we've heard from downtown businesses is that we haven't had people helping, making sure that those parking spaces downtown are actually turning over so that customers can come and purchase things. So this kind of interplays with encouraging people to park in the parking garage and, and all that, so. All right.
I'll make the motion to expedite.
Okay. Uh, motion by Councilman Coste.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Dundon. Any discussion on the motion to expedite? Seems pretty clear that it's needed for, to give a window to advertise. Okay, uh, clerk can call the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Coste.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Madavetsky.
Aye.
Thank you, that is six one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we welcome down Director Personnel Drake Dries and Comptroller Robinson. And I hand things over to Councilman Porter, Chair of Employees for RL twenty-four dash two three eight.
All right, this is, this is our RL twenty-four two, two, two three eight, orders to pass the Local Seven Twenty-nine Firefighters Union contract. Hello, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Um, I'm here tonight to present a summary of the tentative agreement reached between the city of Binghamton and the Binghamton Firefighters Union Local Seven Twenty-nine for a successor collective bargaining agreement covering the period of January one, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, the agreement represents a productive and collaborative effort between the city and the union. And it includes several key provisions that will support both our dedicated fire service personnel and the operational needs of the city. Uh, so we have an agreement on, on the contract and the overview of that is basically the, the wages. The agreement includes wage increases for each year of the contract, specifically the twenty twenty-five wage schedule. We'll see a three percent increase over the twenty twenty-four schedule with subsequent increases of three percent in twenty twenty-six, four percent in twenty twenty-seven, and another four percent in twenty twenty-eight. And additional stipulations have been made for paramedic pay, which will be adjusted to reflect a five percent increase in preceptor pay, which will increase by an additional four dollars per hour while on duty specifically. Uh, we addressed a, a handful of other issues, paramedic staffing and requirements, physical therapy, fire mechanic integration, uh, and educational incentives, health and safety provisions. Retirement benefits were addressed as well as fitness and wellness. Uh, so the agreement, we believe, strikes a balance between ensuring the city remains fiscally responsible while also addressing the needs of our first responders who provide an essential service to our community. I believe this contract represents a fair and sustainable solution that will enhance public safety and support the long-term well-being of our firefighters. I'd like to extend my, my thanks and appreciation for the Local Seven Twenty-nine bargaining team for their engagement, perseverance, and good faith bargaining throughout the process, as well as the significant contributions of the city bargaining team, primarily Chuck Shager, Chuck Robinson, Chief Gardner, Corporation Counsel Sophie Bergman, and Mayor Cram for their support in completing this important process. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Um, I do have a question. Maybe it's been answered before. Who involves themselves in, in recruitment, especially does the union help out with the recruitment or is that mostly county?
Uh, in recruiting new firefighters? Uh, it's primarily the, the, the fire administration personnel, so, so I help with some. Um, but a lot of the events where, you know, where the, where the trucks go out and that kind of thing, that's, that's a good piece of their, of their more active outreach, where they, where they draw a lot of folks to those. And they get a lot of inquiries from those events.
Yeah.
Parades, that kind of thing.
Yeah, when I look on, for, for some of those things, diversity is not one of those. I mean, it looks so white on rice on paper plate in a snowstorm.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I just find it quite interesting. How often do they go into, to Binghamton High School or anything?
Yeah, I don't know.
Involving, involving recruitment.
Yeah, I don't know that they do.
And it, yeah, I, I kind of guess that they don't, some of that's nice. Um, they seem to only go to, to certain events just to, to look good. I was just wondering how that involves and what that involves.
Mm-hmm.
It's, and they're, they're creating a contract and they don't even think about some of, uh, having a certain diverse selective people, especially that lives within the city, or at least have an opportunity to have, uh, within, I just, just wonder.
Yeah, we talked about that before. So having, having a more directive and intentional uh, recruitment effort in that regard is something that's in order.
Uh, but yet we, we steady give them money and, uh, back them up. Yeah, I just wonder. Thanks, Ken. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Chuck, I got a couple of things real quick. Is a three-year agreement is what the firefighters have always done in the past? I was just under the assumption it was under a five-year agreement when you just said three years, it just threw me off.
This one's four. This one's four.
Okay, and then, um, paramedic pay, that was the position we transferred from CSEA to the firefighters' union earlier this year, I believe.
That was firefighter, or the mechanic.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Anyone else?
This, I've got, I don't know, I've got some, I got thoughts, not necessarily questions directed specifically at this contract, but at this point in time, uh, the role of council is to vote yes or no on this, right? We don't have an opportunity to amend it. That wouldn't.
No.
Okay.
No.
So, yeah, so that would be the, the same for any other, um, CBA that comes forward. Yeah.
It's all union. Well, we have, we have no say.
So, yeah, that, that's what I was curious about.
And part of that is it's already been voted on by membership as, as is intact. So once they, once membership votes on that, that's what it is.
Yeah, all the firefighters, their members voted on it, just like when the CSEA contract negotiations are all approved and done, their members will vote on it and make sure it's a ratified contract before it comes to us. All we are is just stamping off what the union's already done.
And this is basically being, you guys, well, they are seeking expedition because of, uh, of trying to meet that, that deadline by January first.
Okay.
Yeah, the expedition is because this contract is supposed to take effect January first and there's a lot of work that needs to be done in finance to be able to set that up administratively.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of administrative things to do with the payroll and stuff.
Curious about kind of the bigger picture stuff, like is this loosely based off previous City of Binghamton contracts? Or is this based off of kind of regional contracts, like where?
It's,
How does it get pulled together?
Yeah, the answer is yes. So, uh, this contract, yeah, it's based off of the template of prior contracts for sure. Uh, but like with most other things, we looked at, you know, Troy and Schenectady, you know, all the usual suspects. And, and looked at some of the aspects that they had. We went into this really trying to, um, uh, be fair and solve some issues, you know, that they may be experiencing to make, to, to make, uh, help, help make the, the experience of being a firefighter in Binghamton a better experience. So some of the things that we did that, you know, weren't necessarily financial, but some of the things that, that we did, um, you know, addressing some concerns over paramedic stuff. So, so that was included in there too, but we took some of those nods from other municipalities. Um, like Troy was a focus area. So, so, yeah, we took, took, took some pieces of Troy. We took some of our own pieces, created some new stuff. That was pretty much where it came from.
And the fire union even brought in their own outside, um, pieces to, for the, into the negotiations as well.
Didn't all make the final version, but pieces of it are here.
I was wondering, so there's a number of different places where there's like committees that are formed and the union appoints some and the mayor appoints some. Is that, so is that something that's standard across cities? That it's the executive branch and the unions? I'm just curious if there's ever, if you saw examples of a role for council and
Yes, there, there are.
Committee appointment.
Yeah, that's pretty common out there. There's these various committees that have uh, different types of folks on them and are pointing some with mayoral appointees and then uh, from fire administration, that's pretty common, yeah.
And since you mentioned that you looked on the outside or, and they also looked on the outside, did they even bother looking at certain diversity programs that you, to bring in to the fire department or leasing recruitment wise?
Not for, not for the contract negotiations, no, but, but that's going to be where we're looking. Because the, there, there's a number of issues that we talked about in negotiations, but they're not to be solved within the contract. They're not contract items, uh, and that would be one of them. Uh, so that's something that we'll be looking at.
All right. Did they even bother looking at Black Firefighters Union?
He doesn't know that.
Oh.
Yeah, again.
He wouldn't, yeah, he, he wouldn't know that. He's just, he's just in the middle. He, he wouldn't know that. You'd probably want to talk to whoever is in charge of it. Yeah, he wouldn't, he wouldn't know that.
Yeah.
Motion to expedite.
Okay, motion by Councilman Coste, seconded by Councilman Middleton, discussion on the expedition. So just as a review, we said that they need to get this in place by January first and that there's a lot of leg, legwork on the finance department to actually set up all the different nuanced pieces of this contract. So, okay, there's no other questions on the motion to expedite. The clerk can call the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilwoman Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Coste.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Madavetsky.
Aye.
Thank you, that is six one.
Thank you. So this will be on Wednesday's business agenda.
I, I got one last question.
Go for it.
Just like in, for CBAs in general, if, if this, if any CBA was to be voted down, does that reopen contract negotiations or is, and then they can, would bring it back through or?
Um, no, not, I guess it depends on why it was voted down, uh, whether it was, it was a, you know, for example, if, if you all felt that way about the recruitment issue, but it's not really a contract issue. Um, so that's something that would kind of have to be worked out otherwise, because as we said, once the membership agrees and votes for it, it's pretty ironclad, you know, at that point. And, um, so it'd be really tough to go back unless there was, you know, maybe something that was just, uh, you know, inherently wrong, illegal, you know, violation of law, that kind of thing that needed to be corrected that you guys picked up on. But I believe that's how that would. I, I believe that's how that would play out.
Okay.
Yeah. So councilmen, if basically if we voted it down, we would leave our firefighters working without a contract come January first.
I'm, I'm thinking of it from a, a point of advocacy. If there was a
Then if you want to be an advocate for a CBA, get on a negotiating team.
Okay.
That's the only way to do it.
Well, I mean, and to that point, I think it council really truly wanted to put their foot down, it would be a matter of us saying, we will not approve any contract that doesn't have a member of council on the city negotiating team. To shoehorn our way into that process if somebody really, really, really wants to. But having said that, I think we'll have all the contracts negotiated and we'll probably see during our term already. So.
You do realize whatever council person you put on the negotiating team would have to recuse themselves of anything that had to do with any money being adjusted with that, the firefighters, the police, the Teamsters or CSEA moving forward. So once you're on the negotiating team, you have to recuse yourself of any legislation with them, because it's a conflict of interest, because you negotiated against the CBA. That's why council's never been on that committee.
Okay. All right. Um, so, uh, we're moving on. So we have RL twenty-four dash, uh, two hundred and thirty, considered in finance, and we have our comptroller. Chuck Robinson. Yes, we did. It'll be on the Wednesday.
We did.
Yes. There was a, there was a discussion after the motion to expedite. Yes. Yes. It will be on the Wednesday meeting. Thank you. We're doing RL twenty-four dash, two hundred and thirty.
Okay. This is the other shoe dropping on the, uh, on the movement of the money back from sewer treatment plan. Yes?
It's, it's a portion to what Billy alluded to.
All right. Do I explain it?
Oh, okay. Um, well, we have a, a capital fund. It's called the HX fund. Um, and it is, it has all these balances in that, in here that you see. Um, I think I provided a report as well, uh, revenues and expenses. And basically what happened is, um, at the end of the project, we got, um, some settlement money and some insurance money from the plant through some, uh, legal work. And we got about four million dollars left over in the fund. So, uh, I've had conversations with bond counsel and with, um, our physical advisors. And we have paid back all of our short-term debt on that plant, uh, project. So now all we have is long-term debt and it's all in the sewer fund. So, that being said, this RL will close out that capital fund and move that fund balance, which was part of that settlement money and insurance money that Billy alluded to. The, the settlement money is, it was actually the plant's. But the plant, they keep their portion for DAC, which is direct administrative cost. So that's why they kept some money for fund balance for work that their people did during the process. And then they send the money back to the city. And it went into this fund. So the four million dollars that is left in this fund plus interest, I think it's about four point nine million dollars now, is money that is due to sewer fund. And the way we, the way we've been told that we have to use it is we can use it back to pay back debt. So basically I have a four point nine million dollar debt reserve in the sewer fund next year. So, uh, that will significantly help our sewer fund, uh, with the budgeting process next year. I can't do anything this year.
Is that, that? The sewer fund has a basically an IOU from the, from the HX fund?
No, no, no. This is just transferring the fund balance in the HX fund. Let's just say, it's just, it basically it's cash and sending the cash to the sewer fund. So the sewer fund's going to get four point nine million dollars. But it, it, there's no other side of the accounting equation, so it's going to go into fund balance, which is the difference between revenues and expenses. And next year, in the budget, I will appropriate an appropriate amount of money to use to pay back the sewer debt that we've incurred on this project.
That's the IOU part that I'm picking up.
Yes, we have.
But that can't happen yet.
Yes, we have, we have long-term debt in the sewer fund that goes out twenty, thirty years on those bonds. So we're going to use that four point nine million to use that cash to pay back those notes over time. And I don't have to budget for it because it's already, we already have the cash. You'll see that in the appropriations in the budget that we use this year. We use about seven hundred thousand dollars for the general fund, about two hundred thousand dollars in the sewer fund. Um, it's going to be the same thing, but they'll be larger numbers.
But you, you said, um, that you were told to use it to pay back debt. Is that by the comptroller?
That is by our bond counsel.
Bond counsel, okay.
Legal bond counsel. No, I made sure I, I talked to them first.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dex.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, next we have RL twenty-four dash, two, three, four, considered in planning. Handing things over to Councilman Hotchkiss and welcoming down our deputy mayor.
This is RL twenty-four dash, two thirty-four, an ordinance authorizing the sale of forty-two Fayette Street to two oh three Court Street LLC. Give us some background, Megan, please.
Sure. Yep. So, uh, this is to authorize the sale of the city-owned property at forty-two Fayette Street to two oh three Court Street LLC. Um, this property is one of the properties the city acquired as part of the settlement with Isaac Anzirout. Um, like many of those, it's in poor condition and, and should be demolished. The applicant here, um, who submitted the offer to purchase owns the adjacent property on Court Street, um, the Binghamton VA clinic. So he plans to demolish the property at forty-two Fayette and expand parking for the veterans clinic there.
Thank you. Um, I, my first question is, um, is there? Was this owner made aware of the opportunity to purchase the property through, like, how was, how was that done? How? So there's, there's a list of properties that were, um, came through the settlement, but how does a member of the public have the opportunity to like inquire about the purchase of one? Does that make sense?
Yeah. So we have an offer to purchase form on the city website. I'm not sure of the history of this one. I think that the applicant reached out, um, to the city and, and submitted that offer to purchase.
Okay. And is there a, like a report of the conditions for the properties that were required through the settlement? Like this was determined that it's like suited for demolition, but is that, is that record publicly available?
So it would be, um, the, the, either code enforcement or the vacant property officer, um, that it would just be part of their regular, um, the code records, which I, I can share with you if you're interested.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to know it for this one and the other properties that were acquired through the settlement. Um, I think that'd be useful.
So that like the, the code history on those properties or the code status?
Or who, who is determining the, that it's a, intends that it's suited for demolition or?
Yeah, it's based on the assessment of the, the code office.
Okay.
Well, it's a little more nuanced than that. As you can imagine, there are sections of our charter that require certain parameters being met before a building is demolished. Um, often that is in tandem, depending on what happens at the location. Um, sometimes it's in conjunction between the fire marshal's office and code. It just depends on the property.
So, all right. Has the building been condemned by the fire marshal or code? When's the last time people were living in it?
Yeah, I mean, we can look into all these questions. If you want to send us a list of questions, we're happy to look into it. I don't have that information at my fingertips. I don't know if Megan does.
And then, I mean, how is the fair market value of two hundred and fifty dollars determined? I mean, did we have the assessor do that or that's just what the offer was put in at?
Yep. The assessor took into account the cost of demolition and the value of the building.
Yeah. So when we receive an offer to purchase, we circulate it to a couple of different departments, including the assessor. Um, and she confirmed that that's, uh, a fair price based in part on the fact that the applicant would be, um, covering the cost of demolition.
Do we know if the, the VA clinic is, was like seeking more parking or is it mostly just to eliminate an eyesore type of a?
I, I think it's twofold on, at, at, at least on the applicant's behalf, and I don't want to, to speak for him, but, um, he, he owns that adjacent property where the VA clinic is. So I think he, I'm assuming if he's, his plan is to put more parking in there, it's need-based. Um, but, uh, certainly it's a, I think a beautification effort too, because that, it is a blighted property right next to the clinic.
I mean, I, we, I would also like to look back and see what the VA clinics parking requirements were and if they've met them with their current almost a hundred spots, I think, if you count them up. I mean, it's, it's, again, it's sort of against a comprehensive plan to demolish buildings for parking. So.
And the applicant would have to go through the same approval process as to get the parking approved. I believe he'd need a variance because of the parking maximums there.
Um, did this, uh, did we pass this by the land bank or anybody as a, as a rehab?
I think the land, the land bank's familiar with that list of properties that we received through the Anzirout settlement. So the one that came to council at last work session, one eighty-one Holly, basically they, they sort of got, you know, they, they took a look at the properties and let us know if they had any interest in, in seeing if they were, um, available to be, or able to be rehabbed.
What would the taxable value of this be going? I guess I'd just better generate a list of questions.
But this, here's my last one. The, is this a typical, um, typical thing to happen that somebody will purchase a city-owned property to expand parking?
We don't own, outside of the Anzirout settlement, we don't own a lot of properties with lighted buildings on them. Um, in the past, if the cities acquired them, we've, we've done so through the auction process for the purpose of light removal in neighborhoods. Um, so I don't want to say if it's typical or not, because it's somewhat unique.
I, I also, I, I don't, I don't know the situation of the this ha, this building is right next to the old Tranquil. I don't know who owns that building at this point, but they might have much, I mean, they half a dozen parking spots for that building might be a hell of a lot more of an economic benefit for that building and business than an extra half a dozen spots for the clinic. I, I, I don't know. This needs to be more of a public process or what?
Is there a way to look up the owner of the Tranquil building and make sure they've been notified that this is an option?
I think I have some research to do.
Okay.
I'd just point out too, that this is because the city owns this property now where we, you know, our plan for the, for many of the Anzirout properties is demolition. We're on the hook for those demolitions, um, currently. So, uh, the, the application and the offer to purchase, it would be, would represent a cost savings to the city and it also removes I don't want to say a liability, but it gets a property that's right now in an unsafe deteriorated con- condition off of our, um, out of our hands. So.
Right. Anyone else? All right. This one's not requested to be expedited, so there's uh, time to continue to dig in. All right. Uh, next we have RL twenty-four dash, two, three, six, considered in employees. Councilman Porter.
This is RL twenty-four, two thirty-six and ordinance to amend chapter one, twenty-four, thirty-nine, personnel policies of the code of City of Binghamton to update titles and to add positions to the list of eight-hour-per-standard-workday employees and up to, and to update insurance percentage to non-union employees. Um, please help me understand what's going on.
Sure, I will do my best and then Chuck will step in. Um, so yes, this is, this is twofold. This is to amend the code, um, to add two new positions that were approved during the budget process. That's a deputy engineer position and the discovery officer position. And then the second part of this amends the, uh, health insurance percentages, it amends the part of the code that includes the health insurance percentages for, uh, non-union positions. Um, so that didn't change from last year, but you'll, you'll see it in your packet where we add in the numbers for twenty twenty-five to reflect that. I think this is something that we do every year after the budget is passed.
Right. Um, since the, the, uh, CSE, CSEA negotiations are, were going on, I didn't know what the percentages were going to be, but we didn't change anything. So I usually, we usually keep, if CSEA doesn't get an increase, um, management won't. So, um, or I'm sorry, the management tested and appointed people. So, um, and then basically this is just putting the people on the, adding the titles for the standard workday and, um, into the code. Cause there's no other place for them to be, basically.
How, how did the, uh, discovery officer end up on this list? It seems like it's, I mean, generally this has been kind of department heads and assistants, and then this seems like this one is not like the others.
Right. It was determined that the discovery officer was going to be a management-tested position. Um, and that, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, management-tested position. So it needed to be on this list since that, they're not in a union, so they're not protected. And it's a new position. And it's going to be, I think it's.
I, I believe so. Although I, I would have to go back and look.
Well, it adds their positions on. So they, when they, all the people on this list get the on par raise with the CSEA union. So that's also part of it.
This is mostly for management or at least management-tested positions, right?
Yes, management-tested and appointed.
What happens for the people that are in the acting capacity?
If, if you're acting, you're still in whatever position you were as you're, before you're, you're not, if you become like an acting comptroller, you're still the assistant comptroller and you're still management-tested. You're not actually the comptroller. So you're not actually appointed. But you'd still be on this list because it's all management-tested as well. But if you, let's just say you were in a CSEA union, you'd still be in the union. You would be a staff accountant or let's just say junior accountant, and then you wouldn't be an assistant comptroller. This junior accountant would be in the union, but you'd be acting, but you'd still have all the benefits of the union. Not this, because you're not actually in the position.
Anyone else?
Uh, this is, so if we're making changes to this section of the charter, there's a, it's kind of a little thing, but there's, um, under section one, twenty-four dash, thirty-nine, uh, B is both the city engineer and B is the first deputy TPW commissioner. Should we make that so they all have their own designation?
Looks like there's a typo.
Oh, oh, I, yeah, okay, okay. I see. Yeah. Um.
I think if it's, if that's a clerical error, then yes, definitely we should. Thank you for pointing it out. I can't imagine that there's a reason that that is like that, but.
I, I don't, I couldn't think of one.
Any other questions? Okay. So we'll keep marching along then. We've got RL 24 dash 227, considered in planning, and I'll hand things over to Councilman Hotchkiss.
So this is RL 24 dash 227, a local law to repeal and replace City of Binghamton Code Section 200 dash 6 through 200 dash 22 and Sections 200 dash 6 through 200 dash 26. So do you want to give us some background on this, Sophie?
Yeah. So this is just to maintain compliance with state requirements. Um, essentially it would propose repealing, um, Sections 200 dash 6 through 200 dash 22 in the, um, building and construction section of our code and replace it with, uh, 200 dash 6 through 200 dash 26. So if you look in the attached, I struck out the entirety of what we'd be repealing and I put in the entirety of what it would be replaced with. A, a lot of it's overlap, but, um, there are a few additional changes and we want to make sure that we keep up with state compliance. Um, I'm asking for it to be expedited because with the local law process, the mayor has to hold a hearing and hoping to bring the code into compliance before the end of the year.
I'd like to see a list of the actual changes. Is that possible or red line changes or like?
Um, I mean, I can do a word document compare for you.
Yes, essentially. Yeah. That'll work.
Sure.
Is it, it's, it's stressful trying to go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth to figure out what the changes are. So.
The changes are state-mandated. So we're just trying to keep our code in compliance. So I didn't change anything from what the state has directed that we have in our code. But I will do a word compare and send that around.
Thanks. Yeah.
So is it, this change is all just, um, compliance-driven and there wasn't any, uh, necessarily new definitions that were like, would be useful to code?
Um, there are a few nuanced sections that I think are probably going to be helpful. Um, but most of it is the same. There were just a couple of sections where things, I believe they added a definition. Um, I mean, I'll send you the compare so you can see exactly what was added.
Just lost my train of thought. Oh, did this new, new list of definitions as, did they come out recently or what's the, has it been something that's been on the back burner for a while?
Um, it, it's fairly recent, um, but it's something that we need to get done. It was just to our attention.
Anyone else? If not, I'll look.
Motion to expedite.
Motion to expedite?
What was, wanted to do by the end of the year, you needed it?
I, I mean, I think it should, we should be in compliance as soon as possible, um, with local laws. Um, the mayor has to hold a hearing. Uh, and there are certain timeframes that have to be allotted.
If we can get a second, then we can move to a discussion on the expedition, motion to expedite. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, given the time constraints, if it's not expedited, it would roll into next year or have to be reintroduced. If it was expedited and voted on on the 20th, um, it would have to be acted on within 30 days. The mayor has a public hearing. Yep. Cities with an executive branch, the mayor holds the hearing on local laws.
So there was a motion. I'm not hearing a second.
I'll make the second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Costy, seconded by Councilman Dundon, discussion on the motion to expedite.
Uh, and me making this second, can corp counsel please get that out to us tomorrow so we can cross-reference this, please?
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Yes. As, as with all expediting, we can always hold it over at the Wednesday meeting if we don't feel we've received what we need. Okay. All right.
That's the joy of democracy.
So we, can we take a vote on the motion to expedite?
Councilmember Porter, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Costi.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medvedevsky.
Aye.
Thank you. That is five one.
Great.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second. I'll second.
Seconded by Council, motion by Councilman Costy, seconded by Councilman Kavanaugh. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Have a good evening.